Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, July the 29th, 2024, and the special city council meeting of Bell Air Beach will now come to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, et in terra nata.
Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City manager Kyle Reeffler.
Here.
And city attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Renee. We have one item on the agenda tonight. That is consideration of B-23-01 Drainage and Street Improvement Project Change Order Number One and driveway adjustment options. I'm going to go to the city manager, and I'm going to let him take over and explain what's going on, and then we're going to go to Mr. Flutie, and we're going to listen to his comments. And then before we go to council debates, since this is the only item on the agenda, we'll go to citizen comments, where all of you will have the opportunity to speak. Mr. Reeffler, you had it before.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the main items are the change order, which would be our first change order from Harvard Contracting. And to give you a little history of how the project started and where we are now, we started up at Morgan Drive and did the curb removal and replacement at Morgan, 25th, 24th. And just ran into minor problems doing the forming up in sections and matching driveways. And the concrete crew primarily using level to make sure that the curb had the adequate fall and the drainage was working properly. When they got to 23rd Street, they started hitting challenges where they were losing the proper shape of the valley curve, and at one point, we were experiencing some puddling. So, at that point, we had a meeting, we talked about what could be done, and they moved down to Palm, Cedar, and Spruce. They accomplished those streets, no issues. There's a very large amount of fall from Causeway Boulevard to the drains on Cul-de-sacs. And then they went up to 14th, and again ran into a problem. It started out where we had an inspector on site while they're pouring the concrete. The inspector observed the process that they were using at that point with the grade level forms, and came to the decision that they weren't getting the curb that they needed. It was coming out too flat, the water wasn't draining properly, and that the way that they needed to move forward was to have designed grade stations so that they could lay the curb down precisely. So, at that point, the construction halted, and Larry, Flutie, and the rest of Gemini Engineering crunched for about two and a half weeks putting together the plans that you see now, and following the agenda back there, and then layout, and he'll go into further detail. They lay out exactly how the curb needs to go in. And what it does is it takes into account the existing grade of the street, but does not try to match up at each driveway along the way. There'll be some slight variations. He segmented it all to reduce the impact to driveways, but it's important to note that the curb might be depending on the driveways as the priority that they were using sort of was, and that's where everybody had issues. So, being that way, that you're going to end up probably, and again, he'll go into the details, slight differences where the curb is either higher or lower than the driveway. We need to come up with, if it's a concrete driveway, that's more of an easy fix. We go back, we pour a concrete acre, and matches the driveway, and then, you know, very little impact. Paper driveways, that's where we run into different options. In previous projects, we've never replaced people's paper driveways with concrete. Some jurisdictions do that, but it's not something new. Coming in Bell Air Beach, from my experience in talking to residents, they want to repaint the paper driveways, so it's important to them. I met with Larry, and we laid out some numbers showing possible, to the right of a is large, this is what we put, right of a, 10 feet, 5 feet, 2 feet. And talking with them today in discussions, he feels that the average will be about 3 feet of paper, we said. So, it shouldn't be to the extent of some of the cost of the numbers that we're looking at, which would be a large portion of as needed. That would come out of our contingency for the project. But we do need to discuss an accurate calculation of what we're expecting so that when it's all said and done and we're paying the applications that, you know, we're not in shock at home until we spend resetting papers. So, I'll turn it over now to Larry Flutie to go over sort of what he designed with the new plans, like what the process is going to be. And the big part of the change order you're going to see is the cost for the surveying crew. So, that's how professional surveying crew come to each street, stakeout, offsets, stations all along the way, that the contractor will line up the complete street of forms, and then pour it to net. Exactly. And then, we feel this process is going to get a lot smoother and end up with a better product for these streets. But I'll turn it over to Larry.
Hello, Mr. Flutie.
Thank you. Larry Flutie with Gemini Engineering. As the city manager is discussing with, and trying to work with the curbs and make sure we're getting the curves that we need to make sure at each drain and the connection.
Mr. Flutie, could you pull the microphone a little closer?
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
The, so the design that we went through is that we went through each of the streets. We segmented the streets rather than taking one large sweep of grades and setting them. We went shorter in segments to make sure that we're matching grade at frequent intervals, and then also ensuring that we have a consistent drainage pattern from out of point to the load. And I think I can take you to an example of one of the streets. This is 19th Street. Okay? And so what, some challenges that we're having, particularly on this street, is all the driveways are either up or down, and it's not one consistent slope down. So, we get to really look at this at small intervals to make sure that the grades are matching the driveways as close as we can and keeping that consistent flow. The, bringing that one example, in this location, the grades consistently is flat on the west side, and then it flows down, and then on this location, it dips down, and then it dips back up once you get to the next driveway. So, in trying to work these, we look at every so often areas where we can match the grade to match the driveways. So, that was the process that we looked at on each street, each driveway, and looked at them so that we can grade this to where we can minimize impacts to the driveways and make sure that we have a consistent flow. And with that, when doing this, and we've got the, that's what we did working on the grading, we got the grading calculations and the elevation set, and we're, with the regrading, we're able to get within, worst case, a half inch with the elevation of the driveway to the top of the curb for the curb. So, I think we did a lot in correcting that. And so that, those plans we put together, the contractor asked for cross-sections and some benchmarks, which the surveyor has. So, we provided that information. And so the plans that we put together shows that the impacts to the driveways are minimized and that the grades are consistent, as I've been saying. The, what we're looking at here on the driveway aprons, and particularly when we're looking at aprons on the pavers, and what we can do there, and replacing driveways, particularly in the pavement, pavers, is we're looking at behind the curb to do an apron area to kind of give the limit, the impact to each of those driveways. Based upon the height difference that we have for each of the driveways, then the concrete apron we calculate would be anywhere from 2 feet to 3 feet. And that would then give a reasonable slope from the back of the curb, if it's in the higher or lower, a slope that's well within what the county standard is for driveway And we're looking at that, you know, the plans that we prepared, we looked at a 2-foot apron, so that's on the plans that we have, that's what we show on there. Now, I know there's maybe, there may be more left, that's what, more or less, that's what we prepared in minimal for the city manager of what would be the cost for repair of impacted driveways for pavers or concrete based upon a 2-foot or 5-foot or 10-foot setback, and what those cost impacts would be. And I think with that, that's how we went through this process, and that's how we've come up with the amount of impacts to the driveways based upon the aprons. So, it'd be from your, my standpoint is, is the 2-foot apron sufficient, or should we go to a larger apron?
Council? Mr. Bankard.
If I heard you correctly, you know that you just recently went out and recreated the upgrades. You've got the reading? Yes.
Why wasn't that done when the initial proposal went out to do all these upgrades?
The plan was that the contractor is going to use their level, and what we've done here is keeping and maintaining the elevations, the existing elevations, like I said, making sure that we maintain that. And they weren't able to maintain that. So, what they requested is that, or our inspector that was out there indicated that what they need is the grade elevations so that they can shoot those grade elevations, and then that will give them the grade and the elevation we need with the set of curve.
All right. So, if the contractor wasn't able to maintain the elevations that the old design, is that what you're saying?
He wasn't able to get the curb section in using, they were using the level to be able to get the curb.
Yeah, they were using 6-foot level?
Yes.
And they didn't use any transit to shoot the street, you know? Isn't that like a little bit neglect on their part? Isn't that neglect on their part?
I really don't, didn't get into their means and methods, but they have the equipment to have done that, but that the, one way of doing that would have been have a level and shoot the levels and the grades. Pretty much what we've done here is we're meeting grades every so often.
Well, I need to, today's, not today's technology, for the last 20 years, you've got the GPS transits where it shoots right on the market, shoot. I mean, you know, it's not even a string block anymore. But the other question I have is, you said all these driveways, some are higher, some are lower. Are these driveways within the last 10, 15 years that were put in? Or, because I'm wondering, I'm sure these driveways all had permits pulled before they were, and this isn't on your plate, but you get what I'm saying? Did the contractor, if he's driveway, did not follow the grade that he needed to accept the street?
Well, the tough thing on, I don't know if he did or not, but it may have.
You said some are higher and some are lower.
And the reason that may be is that the existing curb is higher and lower. So, what I'm seeing is that when they put that driveway in, or the contractor did that, took the driveway and they matched the curb gutter at that time. And with redoing this, trying to get the puddles out of the curb, then some, some of the curb had to be raised in order to get that flow down. And that's primarily the reason why we have that situation.
Yes, Mr. Roberts?
So, going back to 19th Street, which is the one you used as an example?
Yes.
So, I told all of the streets in this project shortly after we had the last decent rain event. And 19th Street, as we all know, is basically ribbon curving there. It's flat. It's not a valley curve.
Right.
And all I can tell you is, after that big rain, there was no water sitting anywhere on that street.
Right.
So, it's flowing properly. Now, I understand when we put in the new asphalt for the street, there's going to be some elevation changes, but the last thing they want to do is create a scenario where a street had no flow issues, and after we complete the new street, we have flow issues. So, I'm confident that's not going to happen when we go through that.
Right.
But you mentioned that there was like a little low spot on 19th Street, but again, for whatever reason, if there is one, based on the shots that were taken, that water is disappearing. And there may be some people here tonight that may want to talk on that, but it was, again, I drove all the streets. I can tell you the contractor did a terrific job on the three streets over here, because again, right after that rain event, no water on the street, no water in the gutters. Morgan, 25th, 24th, for the most part, no water there. Now, interestingly enough, when I drove through the other streets that haven't really been done yet, the old gutters retained water, nothing of significance.
Right.
But there's, over time, obviously, there's probably been some settlement there, that type of thing, which is going to create some water there, but it was very, very small in depth.
Right.
Anywhere across there. The infamous 23rd Street on the south side, from my perspective, and I've had multiple conversations with our city manager, it appears that part of that problem is due to the county on Gulf Boulevard. That water is just sitting there, even today, and it hasn't rained in three or four days, more than 20 days.
Right.
But the water from a week ago is still there. And when I first saw it, it was not only right there at the corner of Gulf Boulevard and the south side of 23rd Street, it kind of wrapped around, but it's obvious that the construction of the new gutters was not causing that, because now there's no water there. There's still water on Gulf Boulevard at that corner. And I'm confident in my conversation with the city manager that the county's going to step up and do what they need to do so that water moves however it needs to move. I think it's going to be a challenge for them. They may have to put in another drain line or something like that, because I was surprised to see that when you continue further south on Gulf Boulevard down to 22nd Street, there's only a drain there on the south side of 22nd Street.
Right.
There's not anything on the north side of 22nd Street, which if there was one there, and they repaired the drainage direction on Gulf Boulevard to go more towards 22nd Street, and that was captured by a drain on the north side of 22nd Street, I think that problem would go away. And they can probably fix that, so that'll be great.
Yeah. Well, you know, we did meet with the county out there on that, when we're looking at the curb work and what we're doing in our interaction there on Gulf Boulevard and ancient streets. And that is one of the items we talked about. Of course, we didn't have an answer at that point, but I think it's something we need to be talking with the county about.
Perfect, perfect. It looks like, for example, when I looked at 12th and 13th Street, there were various options, I guess, that were put in there. Some of the areas where there was a concrete driveway, they did not extend the apron at all. They just cut it right there and put the valley curve right up edge to edge, and all was good. Some of the driveways they put in, anywhere from a 2-foot apron up to what looked like about a 10-foot apron into that existing driveway, I'm assuming so that they could make the elevations work properly so that the water would drain.
That's what they did.
Yeah. There is still a little bit of water on the valley curves on 12th and 13th Street, but nothing astronomical. I mean, it's just normal, you know, it's going to sit there for maybe a day, and it doesn't rain, and they have the heat, every typical heat have, that's going to evaporate, and it's not going to be a big deal. So, it didn't appear to me that there were any existing valley gutter issues on 12th and 13th Street in front of any of the driveways. Just when you get down to the very easterly part, and that looks like something that can be changed, again, I talked with the city manager, and I think that can be adjusted down there so that water actually.
Excuse me, excuse me. Jim, I'm going to ask that you withhold the conversation while we have the speaking. Okay? Thank you very much.
So, when we end everything tonight, I just want to be comfortable that the contractor's comfortable with the redesign, and we're confident, that we feel comfortable that this thing's going to work out with the new surveying data and information. And I also want to feel comfortable that the contractor still feels that that's necessary, because it is a fair amount of money that we're adding to the project for that more detailed survey, every 10 feet stations approximately. So, all the other streets were done, obviously, and they were done well, I feel. So, I just want to make sure that it still is necessary, and I realize I don't want the contractor to be in a difficult position to where he and his company feel like it's going to be difficult for them to continue on the remaining streets without that new surveying information before we approve it.
Right.
That's what I'm looking for.
My discussions with the contractor and with the grading that we're giving, that it's really going to help their process in getting that again. So, it is going to help provide the information they need to put the curb in, and making sure that we're meeting the grades that we need. So, I think, yes, it is helping them, and it will help us to deliver the curb that we intended.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Shaw Elliott?
Excuse me. I would estimate just roughly that we are about a third through the total project. We had streets done before, we have this segment of about 10 streets or so, and there are more streets to be done, correct? So, for those that were done prior to this approach, do you foresee any problems with those streets that are already completed?
The ones that have been completed, we looked at each of those, so they're done satisfactorily. Like I said, for a reason we had to change processes, that when they were getting up to 14th Street, they were having, there were issues in trying to get the section in. But what's been done, particularly out here on the streets that they've already completed, we looked at those, and so they passed, that's why they started the painting. So, one, of those that they have completed, they're good.
All right. So, those that are yet to be done, do you anticipate a different approach for those, or any cost implications for the remaining streets?
For the rest of the streets and doing the grades and what we're doing here, this would, should complete the project without any issues.
That's good news.
Okay, so, do you have more comments?
Well, just one, I was a little confused at the beginning. Did you ask whether we thought 2-foot, the 2 feet would be sufficient for the apron, or what is your opinion about that?
The 2, I looked at the differences on the height of the curb versus where the existing driveways came into, and tried to come up with what would be a good, instead of having aprons, 1 foot on one side, 4 feet on the other, we wanted to have a consistent apron that would capture what needed to be done. And I think with the information, the way that the grades that we have, the 2-foot apron should, would, and will capture the differences in that connection to the driveway.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure that I fully understand what it is that you're trying to accomplish and what the hurdles are you're having to jump over. So, first off, not every driveway is the same grade. Obviously, there's issues with that. At the time that the driveways are made, they're designed to match whatever they're dealt with. So, the curb is already there, they match up to that, and then whenever you rip out the curbs, you no longer have really anything to go on except for what's left behind. Okay? Then, to compensate, because you're wanting to now shoot a level all the way down the street, and you're trying to make sure that water drains evenly all the way down, so as you encounter these various grades, it may or may not need the apron. And the apron is basically a wraparound of the curb, extends into the driveway, and keeps the water from going to one side or the other. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, in the case of the people that have spent a lot of money on pavers, and they've gone above and beyond to beautify their driveway, somehow or another, those pavers have to fit within the constraints of those aprons. Is that right?
Yes.
And then, your plan is, and it's, I believe it's included in this cost, is if it extends into the paver area, that you plan to remove the pavers, I'm assuming clean, clean the concrete, whatever's holding them down on the edges, and then put them back the way that you found them. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, what happens if pavers get broke, and they're high-dollar pavers, and they're nowhere to be found? What's the solution for that?
The tough thing on that is, if they're old pavers, they may still be available, they may not be available. Most cases, they may not be available. In most cases, they may not be available. And that's a tough thing. And that's one of, I think, one of the idols that drove the concrete apron smear is that we provided a concrete apron on the driveways and particularly the favor driveways that will help alleviate that problem, but there isn't any way of trying to match an existing paper with...
Yeah, of course not.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So again, I'm just trying to make sure I fully understand what we're being asked about. And so you're saying on average, you're asking for a two-foot apron, but in some cases it may be as much as a five-foot apron. Do you see that as the maximum that you would have to go?
Yeah, there's only one or two cases where it'd be five-foot. But yeah, two-foot aprons is the majority, is more likely what most people will see.
Are there any situations to where an apron, a two-foot apron is not required at all, where you're going to be able to just go in there cleanly and let's just say you're slightly behind the curb? Or is it a majority of them, you need at least two feet?
No, I mean, there are cases, and if you look at the actual grades and how we're doing this, yeah, we're going to have situations where it could be less than two feet, it may be six inches or less. But the purpose of this, I guess, of looking at that is having a consistent apron for all the streets.
I understand. I understand where you're going with this. Okay. And let's just say that, and I'm just throwing in all the various scenarios, let's just say that, okay, we establish a standard, but then if the homeowner says, "Well, I don't want to adhere to this standard and I don't want you doing this," what's the alternative for the homeowner? How would they, would we throw it back at them and say, "Okay, well, we're going to stop at six inches behind the curb and it's all on you"? Is that even feasible because you're asking for aprons and the aprons would not be there now?
One of the...
Would all the water break in their yard, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, the, if it's not there and it drains, I mean, it could be in the majority of cases that it could work out. The, but the, if we don't, then yeah, I mean, it could cause erosion and where it's trying to get into a curb, it can cause erosion issues there at that point.
Okay, so you're asking for a standard, two feet or five feet, basically, and you say that there's some that absolutely they need five feet to get this job done. So if we voted to do a two-foot, let's call it a setback, or a two-foot repair job, okay, well, it's not a standard if we've got some one-offs here and there. So it's not really a standard. And so I'm not sure if I 100% agree with the standard because I'm not really sure that we even have, I don't think we have a standard now. And if you look at every person's driveway in Bel Air Beach, everyone is different. Personally, I prefer a standard because it would be easier for us. But I also have to consider everyone in the rest of the city and not just what's easiest for us. If there's no other comments from the council at this moment, I'd like to go to the citizens.
Just one question. You're not widening your driveway, you're just taking your apron back anywhere two feet wide.
Correct.
You're going to dig it up with pavers for the...
For the apron, yes.
Put some crushed concrete down.
Say that again, say that again, when you just said about your pavers, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. You're not, we're not widening anybody's driveway, we're just pushing out this apron anywhere from two to five feet. So my question is, you're going to have to lift the pavers up, you're going to have to dig down, either crush concrete or modify down and then pour an apron. Why can't you use the existing paper, pavers, dig them up, put the elevation incorrectly and use the existing pavers as your apron? Which is, which it is that technically just doesn't look like an apron.
I'd have to work with the contractor to do that. It may can't be done, probably, and if they're in good shape, they don't fall apart on us, yeah, that could be done if you're good.
They did High Street, they did First Street, did Eighth Street. I had very few pavers. I didn't have any pavers cracked. I had some around, bricks, bricks around the pavers, the retaining bricks, I had a couple of them, that was about it. They were easy to find, too.
It's usually where they're concrete and those are the ones that make the damage.
Yeah, what I'm saying is the pavers probably were, the pavers were probably in good condition. It's going to be outlined, retaining bricks. That's generally easy to find. So why can't we just appease this audience, put the driveways back to where they were and make this thing work?
Something to consider. Would any other council members like comment? Yes, Mr. Shaw Elliott.
Mr. Flutie, in your series of photos, do you have a photo or an illustration of what this would look like?
I don't have a photo, but it... You're talking about the concrete apron?
Right, an illustration or anything of these?
You can, you know, there's sidewalks that go through neighborhoods and, you know, alongside the streets. And that concrete, you know, go across the driveway, but it'd be part of the stuff, but it'll look just like, it'll look like a sidewalk, kind of on the two-foot.
You could go down Eighth, Eight Street, 118 Eighth Street, they did it, they did it to his house. He had a concrete driveway.
Right.
And they put in probably two and a half feet. It looks nice, but he didn't have pavers.
Right.
Yeah.
In the case of my next door neighbor, he just paved everything and it goes right to the curb. And he would be pretty upset if we tried to do this on 22nd Street. So if there are no other comments at the moment, yes, Mr. Roberts, and then I'm going to go to citizen comments.
Perfect. So I just want to clarify the paver question about breaking. So already, we've had our contractor complete effectively six streets, right? The three over here and Morgan, 25th, 24th. So there's been various phones on those six streets that had pavers. Those pavers were removed in order for the new gutters to go in and replace. So my question is, in those six streets, from the contractor's perspective, did we have any issues with breaking the pavers?
I'll have to ask him that, but I have not heard of any issues like that. But I can verify that with the contractor.
They've all been put back in.
Yes.
And they look nice.
Right.
And I think just to try to clarify a little bit, if I understand this correctly, which I think they do, with the apron, so the goal is to tie in the edge of the apron with the edge of the curb, which is now going to be at a different elevation. And then that elevation from that point on the apron will tie back into the driveway wherever it was cut, whether it's two feet, five feet, whatever that is.
That's correct.
So that's the whole purpose of having that apron, so you can get it back in. It may not be a completely consistent slope at that point because you're going from the gutter at some angle to tie back in. And the reason you're putting that apron in there on an existing concrete driveway is just to try again, get at the appropriate elevation at the edge of the valley curb and tie back in to the existing driveway at some distance so that at least it looks normal.
Right. And the point there is, you're going to, when you make that apron and you bring it up to your curb, you're going to have to either saw cut it to the curb or make it a, it's going to be two separate pieces.
Yes.
Where it's going to crack. So again, why don't we just put the pavers, dig it up, put the pavers back? And I, and we had streets, and Kyle, you were the assistant manager, we had streets done. I don't think Lynn had a problem with any pavers being broken. We did have bricks, but they were easily replaced. So we did eight streets this way and it worked out. Those pavers are, those pavers are generally around two and a half inches thick.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to call for citizen comments. I have some rules for you tonight, which is, we are not asking questions. Instead, we are making statements. You are to address the council, you are not to address Mr. Flutie, you are not to address the city manager. You'll be limited to three minutes. You're free to speak your mind on this and whatever you, I call on you, please come up, give us your name and the street you live on and your house number. And we'll start comments now. So would anyone like to speak? Yes, sir, please come up. Mr. Flutie, if you don't mind, just step off to the side and let's give this gentleman the microphone.
My name is Jerry Alpens, I'm on 107 and 19th Street. And I do have pavers and when I had them installed, I had my own curves which surrounds all the pavers. And those pavers go right up to your curves. Now, when this project started, I went down to 24th, 25th, 26th Street and they, because they said they were going to saw cut. But when I went down there, they were only saw cutting about four inches into the pavement, to the pavement side of it, so they could dig the pavement out so they could pull the curbs out. So I had American Concrete come up and cut along the curb and my curb so that would not be disturbed. So I guess I don't want my driveway nor my curb affected. I guess, I guess that's my decision.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
I also went around and looked at 23rd, 24th, 25th, 26th, and I took pictures of other pavers and they all look great. I didn't see anything broken. Whoever did the first job on those streets did a good job. So, but I just don't want mine disturbed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name's Tony and I'm on 14th Street, 109. So thank you for taking the time to help mitigate the issue on the street. I know it's not easy. So my thing is, kind of my little disappointment here is not seeing what an apron looks like, like not having that, because that was my hope to come here, like, what's this look like? I don't have a paper driveway, but I know it's more concerning for other people on the street. I'm thinking of getting one at some point. I've lived here over 20 years and now I'm wondering, for those that are thinking of that, what do you do now with the apron there and you want to do that? Do you not touch the apron and your papers only go to that point as well? Because I really don't understand the apron thing. Of course, I went on the internet, looked at it, but I don't know the dynamics of this. I was expecting a little more, you know, just visuals of what the state level is going to be. So that's all. So if that can be like followed up on as far as what that would really look like, and I think it was mentioned on 18th Street or something like that, or 108, whatever, that there is an apron somewhere. So that can just be shared somehow, some way, just to see what it is, that's all. Yep. And then, you know, just really dynamics of an apron, I'm looking at this thing wondering like, okay, this is a driveway, what's, how does an apron change what we have right now?
Thank you, sir. I'm sure they will attempt to address your comments whenever we go into debate.
All right, great, thanks.
Other citizens, would anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir, please come up, give us your name and address.
I'm from 14th Street, 104. So I just want to say that I heard a lot about making the pitch, I guess essentially what we're talking about here for the runoff. I know at the end of the street, and I have a vested interest in that property at the end of the street as well, there already is flooding, but we have heavy rains. So I'm concerned that any changes to the elevations is going to increase that flooding and increase damage to my property at the end of that street. So I, I urge that to be taken into account, you know, is there after the surveys, there's going to be any simulations run to see what the impact is going to be to the rest of the properties? Additionally, can we please clarify to some of the other comments, if we do decide to put an apron in, will that be a consistent look? And if so, will we know that beforehand so we can assess what any impact to the paper driveways will be? Further, I'm sorry, that was a question, but will we be able to remove that apron? I think that was the question, just ask in the future if we do decide to put a paper driveway. Can we please clarify that? Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get to the citizen comments. Yes, sir, please come up.
Good evening. Todd Harper, 116th Street. I have a house with a paper driveway. I have walked every road between 12th and Morgan just to see the assessment of what's been done, what has not been done. The properties that were previously done, the pavers were replaced and again, it is a nice look and it is what the owners of the property intended to have done. As an owner, I have pavers and those pavers are above the current curb. I would prefer to have my pavers above the current curb. If aprons are required, then the element of a consistent look or consistent depth on the individual street is important to me for the aesthetics of the neighborhood itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, sir, please come up.
There you go, thank you. Mike Wadke in 110 19th Street. I'm told it's the end of the block and for, I've been there for over 20 years, constant flooding. The way the gutters are pitched right now, they're pitched into the property, not so much going down the street. And we tend to have more flooding coming down Bay Shore and going uphill than versus downhill. And my pavers have been there for, since 1984. So I have a concern with, they're not replaceable. They, I'm actually sitting below the curb right now because of all the bundles coming off the street into my property. And I just have a concern that I can't replace them. And I know that they're not brittle, but I just, I want to keep my pavers. But it seems to be that right now, the way the current grade is on the curb is not so much designed to go down the street into the storm sewers, it's more designed to push the water into your street, into your property. Because there is no curvature on 19th Street, it's just flat and it's just levels coming right into the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please come up.
Karen Harper, 116th. I just have one thing to add to what Todd said. When we walked 12th and 13th, and I understand that that was a different contractor, however, when we walked that, we looked at, we were trying to get an idea of the aprons and the different sizes, we did notice that there is already aggregate showing and there are cracks in some of them. And obviously, like, we have a paper driveway that does not add to the look that we are trying to achieve with the paper driveway. So I would just like for you, if you decide to go with aprons, to address the issue of who's going to do the upkeep on these and keep them looking like we would want it to look. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Steve Zoberfart, 118 14th Street. I'm fortunate enough to have two paper driveways in front of my house. And one of them, one of the curbs has already been replaced by the contractor and it went from a gentle slope to a very deep V. So we have a driveway that's above grade, it comes down, instead of that gentle slope, we have a deep V. So one of the driveways is done. And I guess because of the inspector showed up, that the contractor... And I guess because of the inspector showed up, that the contractor pulled out. So I don't know what the situation is with the other driveway, with the other curves that have already been poured on the south side of 14th. Equally concerned about the flooding, since one of the drains, one of the two drains on the street is in front of the house as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any other citizens like to speak? Alright, seeing as we have no more, citizen comments are now closed. So we have in front of us a consideration of B-23-01 drainage and street improvement project change order number one, and driveway adjustment options. Would someone like to make a motion to approve B-23-01 and make a recommendation on no standard, a two-foot standard, five-foot standard setback? Yes, sir. This is not a discussion, you can discuss on your own. I was just entertaining a motion, so we could have a debate.
Perfect. Based on the conversation that we've had, I don't really think maybe the specific measurement makes sense, based on the fact that there's going to be various elevations that need to be taken into account. So I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and put aprons in as needed with respect to the width that's required in order to get the proper slope on the existing driveway and tie it into the gutter. I don't think we need to have a specific number to go with. Again, you can walk around the city, 12th and 13th Street is a good example, and you will see various apron widths. You can see the new concrete versus the existing concrete, so it's pretty visible. And again, what they've, what they've done, and what they've achieved is, because of the new height of the edge of the gutter, which was going to be higher than the concrete driveway, that's the reason they cut that driveway out, so that they could put in the apron and tie back into the existing gutter. It's, it's really pretty simple, and it varies from home to home.
Mr. Robertson.
So that's my motion.
Well, any chance, could you actually make that into a motion?
I can try. My motion is that we proceed with the option of aprons where needed, and the width of the apron be determined by the contractor.
To make the proper swings.
Yes.
Okay, alright, so I believe I'm hearing a motion to proceed, but give the contractor the leeway to make adjustments as needed, rather than to establish a standard.
Correct.
Okay, and are you going to address pavers at all in your motion?
I would, I would like to make a couple of statements about the pavers, if I could, aside from the motion.
I'm trying to get clarification on your motion.
I know there were a couple of citizens that asked that, if I have an existing driveway that's concrete now, and we do put an apron in, I'm exactly in that same situation. I'm anticipating I'm going to put in pavers at a late date. But to answer the question that was actually out there, will you be required to tie into the edge of the apron? My answer would be no. Because the contractor's going to come in and remove all of that concrete driveway, including the apron. And then when they put in the new pavers from the edge of your garage out to the gutter, that's going to be a consistent slope from point A to point B, tying it into the gutter. The reason again that they need the apron is because the difference in elevation of the new gutter edge and the old driveway. So, so you asked the question, Mr. Mayor, about how can we include that motion to include pavers? I believe at this point, if, if the elevation requires it, we're going to need an appropriately sized apron in order to get rid of the opportunity for the edge of the new gutter to be higher than the paper. Now, if a citizen wants it to be that way, I think we should have that option available to him, as, as one of the citizens mentioned earlier. He's okay with the edge of the gutter being higher than his paper.
Okay, I'm going to ask you one more time. Can you give me a good motion? Or do I need to go to the city attorney, to receive help on this?
To the extent, remember Roberts, remember Roberts has articulated a full motion. Mayor, you've asked him to expand the scope of it. You could treat those in, in separate issues. They are obviously related. But if you wish to, to avoid some of the complication of having a motion that addresses every eventuality, you can have one that addresses just the breadth of the change order to begin with. And then if, if, if the manager or contractor require direction from this body relative to pavers, then, you know, you, you can make a motion to that degree and approach it as a, you know, getting the elephant in the bed at a time.
Okay, so what, the first, the first issue, or the first problem we have is that we need to make these driveways, the aprons, consistent where we have no pavers. Would you agree with that, Mr. Reefer?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so is it, is it feasible to establish a standard for non-paper driveways?
I think the engineer's worked out the standard of the two feet. He's confident that that's going to work on all paved, paved driveways.
Okay, so maybe we do this in two motions. Let's start with a motion that's concerning only non-paper driveways, and that will simplify something. So, Mr. Baker, do you have a comment?
For clarity, the engineer noted that pulling out the pavers providing the slope like an apron could work if the contractor was in agreement. Is that correct?
Would Mr. Flutie please come back up? And I'm, I'm not disputing your motion. I'm going to, I'm going to give you your motion, but I want to make sure that we understand exactly what you're making a motion on, and we handle it, we address it properly. Mr. Flutie, you had a question from Mr. Baker.
The question was, if we pull out two feet of pavers, four feet of pavers, five feet of pavers, and put an apron in there we have to dig out. My question to you then was, why can't we dig out, put the modify in, and bring the pavers back, put the pavers back to the, that slope, at the same slope that the apron was going to achieve? And you said, well, that's possible if the contractor's willing to do it.
It is possible. And yeah, the, on the details of doing it, I'm just trying to grasp. But, you know, the, the apron, you know, the two-foot wide, ties into the top of the curb, and ties into the driveway. If we want to make that pavers and tie it into the same elevations, then yes, that can, that could be done.
Yeah, because I got a picture of, of the street. I was explaining, one had, one has pavers, yeah, it was pulled out, resloped, and the other one had an apron. So I, I can make a motion right now, if you want to fill your motion just a second.
Well, I'd like to make a comment first, or give a question, clarify. If we do that, we're going to have, if I understand it correctly, we're going to have two different slopes of pavers. I, for one, if I had pavers in my driveway, would not want that. Because you're tying in at the elevation of the new curb, so you're going to have a sharper slope at the beginning, and then it's going to level off and go back to your, to your garage, if you do that. That's, that's in effect what the apron is providing. Because the concrete, you can make that anything you want to with the thickness. The paper, the pavers are going to be saturated. But the pavers, Mr. Baker, they're going to go like this, and then like that.
You, you're only, you're only, you're only going two, two to four feet. So you're going to slope, the pavers are anywhere from 12 inches to four inches. Okay, so you can slope this 12, you can slope a 12-inch paper in two feet, and it won't even, you won't even see the variation of your fault. But if you have concrete, you're going to have a hard slope. I think, I think you can slope any paper that's short of distance without having any visual effects.
Obviously, pavers are where we're, we're having some dilemma. So let's get the concrete driveways out of the way. Would you like to make a motion on the concrete driveways and set a standard for, only for concrete driveways?
Do you feel like it's, it's in our best interest to have a standard, like the two-foot measurement?
I think the two-foot, yes, I, I think so.
My motion would be that we proceed with any and all homes that have concrete driveways to, if needed, install a two-foot apron from the edge of the gutter to the remaining portion of the driveway.
Would anyone like to make a second on that motion? Yes. Councilmember Shaw Elliott. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
No? Okay, well, that's three to one. At least we have a standard on the, on the concrete. Are you satisfied with that, Mr. Reefer?
Yes.
Alright, so now we're moving on to the, to the pavers. Mr. Baker, do you have some very strong ideas about the paving? Would you like to make a motion?
My, my motion is that the resident has authority to approve an apron or restore the pavers into a proper slope that the apron would provide.
Could you rephrase that one more time?
My motion is-
Do you have your mic, please?
Thank you. I'm sorry. My motion is that the resident has the authority to approve an apron or restore the pavers into a proper slope as an apron would provide. So if you have a two-foot slope, or two-foot apron, I mean, and you have a runoff of maybe one to 12, alright? You'll have a runoff of one to 12 of pavers.
At any cost.
At any cost.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve, or to give residents approval to decide whether they would like an apron or they would like their pavers restored in, basically, instead of a standard apron.
Could I rephrase that? At any cost.
Yeah, at any cost. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Is it possible to ask one question to the contractor? Will you do that, or is it-
I will. Right now, there's a motion on the table, so you can let it die and then ask the question. Alright, there's no seconds, so the motion dies. Now you can ask your question.
If I could ask the contractor, so if, if we do that, and you've done this a lot more than I have, so how would you visualize the pavers being removed?
Well, the whole issue with- I'm sorry. No, I'm too loud. The whole issue with the-
We, we like loud.
Yeah. What we, the reason, when Larry redid the redesign, as you know, at all the driveways, the curb's going to be a little higher, at every single driveway. What we were doing before, we were tying into the driveways to limit the access, or to limit the impact on the aprons. So now, every driveway we want to come to, it's going to be, could be a quarter inch, could be an inch. You know, it's going to be higher. We need to go back on the apron and go back and fix a certain section.
Right.
We agreed, we didn't agree, I, we proposed that we go back evenly on everyone's driveway, no matter if it was concrete, pavers, everything. I proposed it because every other municipality I've ever done work in, the contractor is not responsible for paper driveways. The homeowner is responsible. The city will only put back the apron in concrete. If the homeowner wants to put it back in bricks, they're welcome to go put it back in bricks. So I just proposed, and while we'll do whatever the homeowners want, whatever you guys say, I'll do whatever you want. I'm not, you know, it doesn't matter to me. But I proposed just to do like a uniform down the street, so when you're looking, everyone's uniform, two foot, you know, it looks nice and clean. You know, it's two foot down, all the way down, whether it's concrete or pavers. Now, obviously, some homeowners, you know, like their pavers. Rightfully so, you know, I don't want my pavers too. But the issue is, is like you were saying, we're just matching the existing. So in that two foot, the slope could be like this. The slope could be straight. The slope could be consistent all the way. So I'm, I'm worried about when, one, when we remove the pavers, that they're going to be damaged and broken, and we can't fix them. Two, when we put them back, you're creating a slope, right? So if you're going uphill, you need more pavers. There'll be like a half an inch to an inch gap right at the, right at the apron. So what do, and then what if we can't get any more pavers? You're going to, so do I leave the gap there? You know, then we're, then we fall into that issue. I was just proposing the concrete just to, so we don't have any issues going down the line. But we'll do, there's a pay item for both. You guys have a pay item for removing and replacing pavers, and you have a pay item for removing it as concrete. It's just, we were trying to limit the impact to the homeowners. And plus, if we do it in concrete, we can pour it all at one time. I could pour the curb at one time. I could pour the concrete apron at one time. If there's pavers, we got, our paver subcontractor is not going to come and do one driveway. He's going to want to do, you know, five or six at a time. So it's going to limit the homeowner's access into the house, which we didn't, we didn't want that to happen. But like I said, we'll do whatever everybody wants. It's just, we don't want, we put the two-foot pavers back, you have an elevation change, and then really, you have to go back to the, to the drive, you know, to the, to the garage door, which that's going to cost a fortune to do, you know, if you guys want to do it that way.
And I, I agreed with you on what other communities do, which is, if you build something in the right way, and let's say a water main breaks, and they dig it, everything, they put dirt on it, and they call it a day. And it's all on you to put it back.
Exactly. If it's pavers, if it's concrete, you know, they'll restore it in concrete. But usually, pavers no one touches, because then it's the, oh, the contractor broke the pavers while they were being picked up. And then we get blamed for breaking the pavers. Then we can't find the pavers that match. And then we're into a whole nother, you know, we're back here again for another council meeting, because I broke pavers that can't match. You know, you guys are all getting mad at me, because, you know, just trying to limit that, that was all. I thought that the concrete apron uniformly down the road would help that.
Consistent with that idea of having some uniformity, I would also be concerned about any process that allows homeowner discretion. Because how do you administer that? How do you ask for a decision? What happens when someone doesn't make the decision? And then, and you're there, and you're ready to pour concrete, and somebody's a holdout, the label on the street? I think that's a problem.
Well, it's a, it's a good point you brought up. And one of the issues that we actually have right now is code. So we allowed everyone to do whatever they wanted to, for the most part. So however you want to meet the curve, and Mr. Reefer, are you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's what we've done in the past. But if we established a standard, well, we would also need code to back that up. Because as soon as these gentlemen did their job, we'd have people out there digging up the concrete and changing it to the way that they really wanted it to be. So it's a, it's a difficult situation for us, because this is, it's always in the past, it's been whatever the homeowner wants. And now, we're trying to solve a flooding issue. And it seems like no one's happy. So I could, I, I'm happy that we've at least addressed the concrete, but I, I'm sort of at an impasse right now on the paper situation. Because, because you're right.
Yeah, I just want to present all the facts to these guys, and just lay it all out, you know? I don't want anybody, you know, any homeowner to be, you know, upset or anything that's going on. And we don't want to limit- going on, and we don't want to limit, we need to get, we need, just like the redesign with the curb, we have directive on the curb now, and there won't be an issue, everything will be fine. Just, we need a solid directive on these things so that, you know, as we move along, there's no downtime involved, you know, just sitting there twiddling our thumbs on what to do with someone's apron.
So the impacts of allowing, let's just say that, okay, everyone gets a two-foot curb and then, I'm sorry, two-foot apron, and then six months from now, the gentleman that said he was considering pavers, he comes in-
Yep.
And his crew tears it out, and what's going to happen with all that storm drainage? Where's it-
The storm, the, so, the apron issue doesn't impact the storm drainage problem at all. This, what Larry did was redesign it where the curb now has a consistent shape throughout the whole thing. So there'll be a gutter, nothing will be, come to like a flat point or anything like that. So the, this apron issue, it has nothing to do with erosion, it has nothing to do with, it's just aesthetics, that's it. This is all this is about is aesthetics. It has nothing to do with the curb, has not, I mean, it's just now because we're going to be a half an inch, three quarters, a quarter inch, we have to go back a certain distance on some people's aprons to fix it. But it's not a, it's not a, it's not a stormwater issue, this is strictly an appearance issue.
Okay. Mr. Roach?
So if we did, as one of the citizens suggested, if we did go ahead and not, not put in the apron, and the edge of the new gutter, let's just say a half inch, worst-case scenario, is a half inch above that. I'm not a materials engineer, but so the, the vehicle's driving over that-
It would just be like a little bump, that's all.
Do you think it would actually break the concrete, or is this something we could use there?
Yeah, because that, yeah, that edge could crack a lot. I would not recommend doing that at all.
Right.
Because I have to still remove a strip of the pavers-
Correct.
To, to form, put our form board in.
Right.
So either way, we're still removing the, I guess it's the soldier course is what they call it, the one that borders the outside and, you know, keeps it all in. We still have to remove that no matter what, we're resetting those no matter what. It's, the fact is, when, now that it's, we're not meeting the existing driveways anymore, we have a design which shows that we have to be higher, so at what, you know, we have to go farther back in the people's driveways now.
And there's no flexibility on that half inch one way or the other?
No, because this is based on, you can't change that. It's designed as what it is. It's, you're going, now you're changing the stormwater problem, yeah.
No, I'm talking about where the, the lift of the apron meets the pavers.
No, I don't, I don't think you want, because you want, because right now, the design is going to be a consistent curve throughout the whole street. And then if you start dropping backboards and things like that, you're going to change his design, and then now we've got to go back, you're, you're just opening up a whole new, you know, can of worms.
So ultimately, if we did that, it falls back on the homeowner. If they want to make a correction, they need to lift up their pavers and raise them or lower them, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And like I said, there, there is a pay item in this, in our project for removing pavers and removing concrete. There is as needed, there is an as-needed pay. So it's, it's not like I'm going back and going to be, oh, now the paper driveways are X amount. It's not, it's a per-square footage price already set in the bid.
Two feet. Council?
I just can't understand how the city did eight blocks and some more with pavers, putting them back, and some were cracked or whatever, it's found it, or the contract found it, and now all this stuff we can't do.
Well, could I make a comment to that?
Go ahead.
Uh, when we were on, I don't know, see, one of these streets right here, one of the homeowners had a paper apron driveway, called us, called the city, said that we had broken their paper apron driveway, that our vehicles had driven on them when we were moving the curb, that we had broken that. Before the project had started, we had the entire right-of-way video and narrated by someone that walked, that walked the curb line, walked the aprons, came up to this homeowner's driveway, looked down, pointed at it, said, all the curb, all the, there's a bunch of broken pavers in here, you know, just to note it on the video and moved on. We sent that information to the homeowner, still not happy, still says I broke the pavers, still says we drove on the driveway. It doesn't matter what, it, it all gets blamed on me no matter what, even if I had video proof that we, their pavers were broken before, it, it doesn't matter. So I'm, we're trying to limit, we're, we're getting ahead of it to discuss now-
Right.
That, you know, we all have to be, you know, work together on it, you know what I mean? But that's, and then that's where we came to the redesign on putting two-foot back on the concrete aprons and stuff like that.
Here's the problem I have. I live in Valor Beach, and you go around and everyone has like this different driveway, this is a unique-
Yeah.
This isn't Vargo.
Yeah, I understand.
This isn't a homeowners association, okay, where everything has to be one color and people like that. This is a unique town that you pay a lot of money to live in, and now you want to make, so as you said, I, you know, look down the street and it's all consistent.
It just, it seemed to me, because Larry's-
Where do you live?
I live in Safety Harbor, Florida.
Okay, that's a lot of, that's consistent.
Yep, yeah, so it's, in Safety Harbor, the apron has to be poured in concrete, and there has to be an expansion joint all the way around the apron. So if the city has to come in and demo the apron, they don't have to do any saw cutting, they don't have to do anything. They take their, their machine, they pick up the concrete, and it's gone. They can fix the water line, they can fix the issue. It's to help with public works and make the lives on the city easier for repairs. They don't, most cities go that route because they want to make, they don't want their public works out there removing pavers if it's underneath, you know, when the water main breaks or the sewer line breaks or, it's just, it makes it easier on them. They can get in, they can fix it, and then the restoration, you know, is put on somebody else, which is just pouring back in concrete. And I, I just, when that issue came up with the homeowner, and we were talking about the redesign, and we discussed this with Kyle and Larry, I just brought this to the attention. It's not set in stone, you know, we can, tell me what we're going to do and we'll do it, that's all.
Well, Mr. Baker, you're, you made a motion earlier, you're welcome to make another one, and we'll see what the council-
Oh, my, my first motion didn't get a second, so why?
One and one up and two-
I'll make another motion. I motion that the residents have the authority to approve an apron or restore the pavers into a proper slope as an apron would provide.
Would anyone like to make a second on that? I'm sorry, the motion dies. All right, so would anyone else like to make another motion?
I want to know what our expert's recommendation would be for paper driveways. What would you like to see done? Or what would you not like, what, not what you'd like, what do you recommend in your expert opinion as the most appropriate for this community?
Again, as you listen here, I mean, our recommendation would be for the two-foot line apron, and that will take the, be able to handle each of the streets. That will allow the city, should a time come that it has to be dug up or a water lane, a water line breakage, it just makes the public work side work smoother for any digging and restoration repair. So that's what we would recommend would be an apron like that.
I'd like to use Sean.
Okay.
Similar to the first motion, I would like for all of the homes that currently have pavers to allow a two-foot apron to be installed from the edge of the gutter after removing the required pavers to be that apron to be poured in that, in that space. If a homeowner chooses to not have that apron, they have that right. Of course, I don't think it's a great idea because of what we discussed, and when we're talking about uniformity, again, I'm 100% confident that even if that two-foot apron is put on my concrete driveway, which is a great idea to tie into the gutter, when I do choose to put pavers in, my paper company's going to remove all of that concrete up to the edge of the gutter, and then he's going to put the proper fill material in and have a consistent slope from the edge of the gutter to my garage. So it won't have the two-foot paper, won't have the two-foot apron at my house.
Okay, so I think your motion is homes with pavers still get the two-foot apron, the homeowner has the option to remove the pavers before construction begins. And then what, what was the rest of it?
Well, the paper's going to be removed by the contractor.
Okay.
And the contractor's going to put in the two-foot apron. So the only addition I had to that was if there is a homeowner that decides, I don't want that, I just want my pavers to remain where they are up to the edge of the gutter. So in that scenario, the contractor would still remove them, but the contractor's going to put them right back where they were after his gutter is poured, and there's probably going to be a lid there.
So you're, I think what you're saying is, your motion says either you give the homeowner the option to accept the two-foot apron, and they do a best-case scenario of removing and, and putting the pavers back where they join up to the apron?
Correct.
Or the option B is, don't do anything with my pavers, stay out of my yard?
Well, they still have the ability to move them when they put it together.
Okay.
Right? And then they're just going to be replaced. It's as if they weren't touched.
If they weren't, if they, okay. So accept the two-foot apron, or I don't want a two-foot apron.
Correct.
In either case, take, remove the pavers and put them back. Everyone get that? Okay, so the motion on the table right now is to allow the homeowner to pick whether he gets a two-foot apron. If he has pavers, he's given the option of accepting the two-foot apron with pavers removed to make room for, for the apron, and then they're placed, they're returned back neatly as originally proposed by the contractor. Or, or the homeowner has the second option of, don't accept the apron and raise my pavers and put them back as best you can.
Best you can.
As best you can.
Put them back?
Put them back.
It's like we-
So you're running, so you're, you could be setting a tripwire. So, so delivery guy goes in, makes, Amazon pulls up to your house and walks out, hits the curtain, pulls down, you get sued.
It's just a motion on the table. It's, I'm just sitting there. We're not in the way at this moment. So do I have a second on this motion? No. I'm sorry to lose your eyes. Mr. Reefer, what would you like to see served?
So there are some driveways that are very, very close to the existing, like the existing driveway is going to be very, very close to where the curb is up, and it's going to be like very minimal. And on those driveways that happen to be pavers, I think it's totally feasible that we could pull up the pavers and-
Just put them back?
Put them back and make it work. Um, there's going to be other driveways that it's going to be a bigger difference, and, you know, what? Concrete gives you a little more versatility to pour in there, but trying to reset pavers without going back an extreme distance, it may not always look great. So I think in that case, it's, it's the best option to use an apron. If the homeowner wants to do something different, then we could just leave it up to them, but they would be incurring the costs as far as they want to go if they don't use an apron.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, accept the two-foot apron, you will pay for it or don't, and it's all on you. Is that basically what you said?
We'll, we'll provide a solution, but if it's a matter of going, you know, can be back into the, to the right-of-way, and we, you know, we have to, we do have to set some kind of standard because, you know, most driveways are one grade. And we'll try, I want to try to put the pavers back to make residents happy, but we can, but we also have to be realistic on where it's going to end up.
For the record, what is a five-foot apron costing?
Do we have any-
Average, who would you say a five-foot apron on an average size with driveway?
On, on average.
In concrete, how, how much would that cost? Do you have a run of quick numbers?
We gave us numbers for both, the paper option-
That's for all the impact.
This is impacted, this is all impacted.
Do you have a cost for a five-foot apron?
Well, on the five-foot, if we put the, say it's a five-foot impact, concrete would be $84,000, or pavers would be $169,000.
Yeah, but you're talking total project.
That's total project.
I'm talking about per home.
You got to believe that. Pavers is $20 a square foot, and concrete's $10, $1,000.
So why don't we give that, why don't we give the homeowner the option of $10 of the five square feet, whenever that comes out, we'll figure it out. But if he wants to put his pavers back, absorb the other cost, it should be minimal since we're going through life.
Yeah, $10 of the concrete parts.
$20 of the pavers.
Yeah.
So I'm saying, give the homeowner the option, saying, we're going to give you five-foot concrete at no cost. If you want to put the pavers back, then we're going to give you, we're going to offset, we're going to give you whatever that cost is off of the pavers.
That difference, yeah.
I think I'm hearing three different things here. One is uniform, everybody gets a two-foot apron. Two is-
That's already passed.
That was already passed for the concrete.
And I can, I can always be amended. I'm running with a motion.
Who was the second?
Two is people decide on their own, subject to some standard. And three, which is where I thought we started, and what I thought you just said was that the contractor would have discretion to do best you can as you're going down the road, but that some are going to be very narrow, aprons, and others would be wider. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, something, something similar to that. Originally, whenever I had a discussion with Mr. Reefer, I thought the intention was to establish a standard and then give the homeowner the option to either accept the standard or accept the cost to make their driveway as they wish.
How would that be administered?
Well, it would be administered by, we're here to work on your driveway, do you want this apron or not?
I'm going to change what you just said in your motion, with the five-foot cost of concrete, the offset.
I, I understand, I understand where he's going with this. So I think the motion would be, establish a standard of five-foot setbacks. If you choose not to accept the setback in your driveway, then you are awarded the offset cost to repair your pavers as you wish.
That's, that's my motion.
And I don't know what that, what that cost would be, but I'd say, do we even have a method in place to, to administer something like this?
Yeah, I mean, Larry, Larry can calculate what that would cost, and if they choose to reset their pavers however they want, he could provide this.
And a five-foot standard for all concrete driveways would certainly alleviate a lot of the steep inclines and issues that we would encounter otherwise, correct?
Correct.
That would also prevent a lot of people from having to throw those big rubber things out at the end of their driveway, just so that they can get their car out of that block enough, correct?
Yeah, so.
Okay, so-
Isn't, isn't five-foot standing getting- Isn't, isn't five-foot standard getting them?
That's a mess.
Like maximum credit as opposed to what the cost of their particular driveway might be?
Just with the pavers.
Yeah, for those who pay.
I, I would think that there would need to be, now, you've not actually made the motion yet, so we're still talking about it, okay? But I would think that what would need to happen is that if there's a value that's established for a five-foot apron, that you could turn in receipts for a maximum of the amount of the five feet of concrete. To offset the repairs, to, to put your pavers back, but in no way would I, I'll see where you're going with this, in no way would I be willing to just flat rate, give everyone with pavers that, a, a flat amount without actually having something to back up. So it would be like you turn in a receipt and you get a reimbursement for your hardship of having to put your pavers back in place.
And this is done when?
After the fact.
So we come through and build what? And then they ask, they do their own modification?
What I'm seeing right now is each homeowner with pavers would be, would be asked, do you want the five-foot set, or the five-foot apron, yes or no? And if they say no, then thank you very much. And here's a form. If you decide to have your driveway modified to accommodate not getting an apron to match up with the new guttering, fill out this form, provide receipts, and we will compensate you for your trouble.
If we do that, I think that we need to have a process for how that, how they are given notice, how that is set out in advance with a specific deadline for the response.
I think that that's probably, that would be, I see where you're going with that also is that, okay, a year later I decide that I wanna replace these old crappy pavers that are broken and I, so yeah, there would probably need to be, say, a thirty-day.
That'd be very short.
Yeah, 'cause we're starting, we're restarting in a week, two weeks or whatever, so we need to have some sort of process that, okay, you'll respond by this day and then we're going to do what? What's the default?
Do the, the concrete.
Okay.
Okay, so make sure I've got this right. Okay, we have a motion on the table or we're about to. Mr. Banker, please make your motion.
Uh, exactly how you worded it.
Okay, I, I need you to say.
My first, you want me to just go ahead and say? I make a motion that we give the resident the option, 'cause he has pavers, up to the five-foot setback of, with, with a concrete, we bring a cost, he can receive that compensation with his pavers back.
Okay, and his cost?
His cost.
Or, uh, but it cannot exceed the cost of the five-foot apron?
If you need a timeline too now, within the next ten days or five days.
You're not gonna get anyone to repair the pavers.
No, I'm saying.
I, I don't think the motion needs to lay out all of the administrative protocols that will go into place to actuate this process. I think your, your contractor, your engineer, and your city manager are looking for policy direction. You folks are policymakers. So give them your policy direction with whatever fiscal impact it may have and your manager can implement it. And if there are additional delays to start times or anything else as a result of implementing this, that's a cost of assuming business that we're doing here, but I agree with you from an operational standpoint, your staff, your team that you've either contracted with or hired, will work to ensure that it is implemented in the most prudent manner practicable under the circumstances. But you guys don't need to lay out, you know, forty-eight hours, seventy-two hours, we're gonna lose the plot that time.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to give residents, homeowners with pavers in their driveway, the option to accept a five-foot apron in their driveway or reject that. And, and they're, they basically are taking it upon themselves to get repairs done to match the new guttering and curb at a cost not to exceed the equivalent, which we have not established what that is yet, of a five-foot apron. Do I have a second? Okay. Don't know what to do here. The motion, I.
Control.
All right, well, I've got two people here that keep saying, no, do you have an option for me? Would anyone like to make a motion so that we can end this meeting and give these people some direction?
I'm gonna ask, how is this typically done? I mean, normally you don't have a lot of input as far as what happens to the city projects. How is this typically handled?
If this was Largo, Florida, they would, it would just happen. They would not get notice if their, their street or their driveway would be wrecked. They would come in and do whatever they wanted to and then whatever was beyond the apron or, or whatever.
Well, that's Madera Beach.
Would be all the homeowner to prepare.
Madera Beach and the Avrogs Beach, any comparable community it's ours.
And other communities, they will, of course, give notice of construction's going to happen, but there isn't any notice of, of something like, you know, pavers or concrete. If they come in, it's everything in, within the right of A, it's either taken out and then replaced according to the design drawings.
And you can't compare other cities to Baller Beach.
So the city manager had, had made a comment earlier that, that he felt, in working with the engineer, that there were probably just a few homes that had anything of significance over like a quarter of an inch elevation differential between the top edge of the gutter and the existing drive, existing paver height. Is that, are you comfortable with that?
No, there's some that are, that are over a half inch and there's some that are barely a quarter inch. It just varies because he designed the curb without taking into, into, you know, consideration every single driveway and that's what we were running into the problem by trying to match driveways.
Will we be able to, on an individual basis, like if you're talking to the homeowner and giving them whatever option we decide on, can we tell them, will the elevation differential between the top edge of the gutter and the top of your paver be a sixteenth of an inch or a half of an inch? Will we, will we be able to tell them that at that time?
Yes, well, that information would be on the plans and the survey, so we can't tell them how much of the difference there will be.
Right.
Yes.
I don't think that that would be you, I think that that would be our staff.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And that information will be published somewhere and everyone should be able to just look online and start with what the impact was. Okay, so we still have the issue with the pavers. Mr. Robertson, now, would you like to make your motion?
Well, I made a motion earlier, which was, we go with the two-foot apron even for the, the homes that have pavers. And if for what, if for some reason that didn't work for a particular homeowner or they chose not to want to do that option, then that, that's where we don't really have a perfect answer at this point.
Okay.
What options do we wanna make available to the homeowner?
Now, I, I'm hearing your motion and before I confirm what you just told me, I did also hear that a five-foot apron is much easier to work with for the homeowner, for the car driver, and also for the, just to make everything match up. So are you at all entertaining?
Yeah, I'm fine with a five-foot. I just think the, the owners of, the homeowners with the pavers are gonna wanna have, I would think probably, a shorter distance, only because now we're giving, we're taking away five feet of their pavers as opposed to two feet. So it doesn't really matter to me, I'm just trying to put myself in their shoes that now you've just removed five feet of my pavers that I've already paid for some, some time ago. And now when that job is done, you've just stacked up a bunch of pavers in my garage.
Right, and, and that's where, where the option was, okay, if you don't accept this, whatever, two feet, five feet, well then, it's back on you to make it the way that you want, but we will assist you, assist you with your cost. And the other option is you don't give them anything and you, you take it and leave it. I think that the Baller Beach way is, is, is probably the better way where we would assist them, because we're trying to solve the problem and we're trying to take all of you into consideration and we're trying to make sure that, we know we can't make everyone happy, that's impossible, but we're trying to accommodate the best we can because we know that everyone is, they, they take pride in their homes. That's one of the things that makes Baller Beach so awesome, is everyone loves our community, we take pride in our homes, we take pride in our yard, that's why we don't let cars park in the street, why we don't, you know, we, we have the standards. And so what we're trying to do is establish yet another standard. And, but this is a standard, hopefully with options, which is, okay, if you don't accept the standard, then it's gonna come back to you and you have to figure out how to make it right. We'll, we're willing to, to help you pay for it, for some of it, but we can't just not do this job because you've got pavers in your yard. And I think that's, that's what I'm hearing, so.
I thought I heard also though that two, a two-foot apron would work. Was that a fair statement? If we went with a two-foot apron?
Yes.
That would be able to accommodate all scenarios, including the pavers?
The two-foot apron would work and like I mentioned, reporters, a couple scenarios where it'd be a little bit longer with the five-foot, but then some being a couple, couple cases.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna raise, is that if that's the case, then why would we be the first people with the five-foot?
Well, of course, that's, that's, that was the next point, was that whatever it is, the standard is, that would be the maximum compensation. So if, if someone would like to make a motion on the two-foot? I would be more than willing to go that route. Since we've already established two feet on the concrete driveway, that would make things pretty straightforward that, okay, here's what your options are. Are you gonna accept the two-foot apron or you can reject it and we will give you, we'll compensate you up to the amount and cost to do that apron?
I'm here, I'm gonna make a motion to reopen. Citizens' comments, they've heard, they've heard a bunch of recommendations, some pass, some mail, see what you guys like.
I'm sorry, you're, you're, we don't do that. It's, it's because there is already, we're already in the debate phase. We, we know where, how everyone feels.
Well, we don't live on these streets, that's correct. And I figured, they're here, let's hear what they have to say. What would you like to do?
Well, I, it's, it's underwhelming. Do you want to reopen? Yeah, I know, and we don't, do we currently have a motion on the table?
No, no, it's good.
All right. I'm going to limit comments to one and a half minutes. Would anyone like to make a comment? No? Yes? Todd, please come up.
Todd Harper, 111 16th Street. I have a driveway with pavers and I tend to lean toward the idea of it's my decision apron or not and with the idea of if there's a concrete credit to be put for replacement of the pavers, so be it. What I would prefer is that the contractor does the job from beginning to end versus getting into with individual cycle, individual reimbursement and individual permits. So the idea that it's all done, give me a piece of paper to sign and whatever the difference is, let me know and I can make a rational decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Anyone else? All right, we have two, you first, sir. Todd, you're there. Play.
Hi, Dewayne, 104 16th Street. And first I wanna thank you for having a common sense approach with your pavers because we're really talking a sixteenth inch to a half inch higher, which isn't gonna change the gap or the distance in the entire span of the pavers, it's just not. It's so, that common sense approach of putting back pavers just makes sense. There is no need, the only need for a two-foot apron at all is to reduce the liability of the guy's breaking the pavers when they're pulling them out. That's really all it's for, okay? The actual putting back pavers, when you're only dealing with a sixteenth of an inch to the maximum of a half an inch higher, that's not gonna change the distance, they're not gonna need more pavers to get to the apron. So that's just a no, pardon. So that's all it is. So thanks for that common sense approach that we are, got away from. We were right there, nothing got away from it, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, yes, sir.
Jerry Hoffman, Jerry Hoffman's one of, Jerry, one of us on 19th Street again. I lived at the other streets, they were all put back fine. They were all put back fine. Again, on, on mine, I have a concrete curb and since I have that curb there, why can't you just lift up your existing curb and not disturb any in mine? I don't think, you know, you guys are talking about a half inch difference and that's nothing. You know, for, uh, some of the driveways I think are almost an inch that they drive up from your curb in another driveway. So this half inch that you're talking about is, is nothing. Yeah. Is, is, is the reason you wanna dig back into pavers is because the contractor cannot pull out the existing curbs? Is that why you're disturbing the existing pavers?
Whenever we go back to a debate, maybe we'll bring that up.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, citizen comments are now closed. You're welcome. All right, do we have a motion?
I'm gonna bring back my old motion.
Which one? First, I'd like to.
The one about reimbursing.
Okay. Are you fine, are you, are you fine with the two-foot apron? And I'm reimbursing based on that because I will, I will not vote for five feet if we're setting a standard of two feet.
I would vote five.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to allow residents with pavers, give them the option to either accept the two-foot apron, we will remove pavers and place them back appropriately, or you reject the two-foot apron and the money saved by not doing an apron at that address can be applied for, by the homeowner to, for reimbursement for doing their own thing. Do I have a second on that? Okay. I would, I would entertain anyone to make a motion if they're happy with it.
I would ask, I'm gonna ask a question again to the contractor. So one, one citizen just came up and said they're, they're fine with the lift of, of the gutter being up to a half inch above their highest paver and that intersection of the intersection here. So the first question is though, is there anything from a construction standpoint that you guys could do in front of those homes where we have pavers to eliminate effectively a little bit, some type of camphor or something where we're coming down to it, just, just right there in front? I mean, it doesn't seem like, well, I know it wouldn't affect the stormwater flow at all.
Yeah, the only thing that possibly could be done is, it's with the backboard, you have to change the elevation of the backboard. But with the new redesign, and get, we're getting set elevations now.
Right.
So then we're back to the point where the ambiguity comes into play. For how far back on each driveway, if you drop the backboard down, is that gonna create a no flow, no flow line in the gutter anymore? You know, we're back to the, the problem where we arose before now that we have the redesign.
So if we don't mess with that then, so let's, let's, let's avoid that now.
I have, I'm sorry, okay, don't interrupt you, but we have to remove one set of brick pavers.
Correct.
To put our board in.
Yes.
I can't pour up again, well, the only, the only pavers we didn't remove was the ones that we poured right up against it. But the current redesign now is, we're higher than all the driveways, either higher or lower. So at least one row of pavers would have to be removed.
Do I understand that completely? So that's, that, in my mind, that's not an issue.
Okay.
But I'm just talking about, so what is? But I'm just talking about, so what is done, and the pavers have been put back, and there's effectively anywhere from a half inch to a quarter inch differential right there.
Yeah.
In your mind, is, are there any problems that that would cause?
It's just almost an aesthetics thing, too, and then that, you don't want that radius to break as well. You want surfaces to be flat with each other, so when you drive, you drive on one surface to another surface. So what's going to happen probably is, if you leave that gap there, that reveal, that little bit of reveal, it could happen, it could not happen, it'll break off, it'll break off, and there'll be like a little chip mark there, and it won't be like a nice rounded, edged, edged piece.
And that's the whole purpose of the apron?
Exactly, exactly, where you want to, you want to have both surfaces meet at a certain elevation level, you know what I mean? So, yeah, I don't, I don't see...
How about it be diamond, diamond wheeled and grounded down, for even service?
For the pavers?
For the concrete?
Oh, yeah, mostly all situations where you're, where you're meeting new concrete, you always, you don't grind, you just demo as far back as you need to, and then tie it in, like, we've discussed the two-foot.
There's going to be a quarter inch, a half inch gap.
Oh, you're talking about grinding that, that reveal?
Kind of like you see on sidewalks, you know, where they...
It's going to look really ugly.
It will.
So then, now, now we're back to, so what's uglier, having a two-foot apron or having your thing, your corner ground down, you know?
You could actually put a coated seal in there.
What's that?
You could actually put a coated seal in there, grind it.
Yeah, after you grind it, we could do that. I mean, that's, the only thing that's, that's not a bid item or anything discussed previously, we would have to, I don't know the cost of that, I don't know, what we have now is solid cost of the bid, twenty dollars a square foot to move and replace pavers, ten dollars a square foot to remove and replace concrete aprons, so...
Thank you very much. Mr. Roberts, has he cleared things up for you, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm back to the original motion of a two-foot apron, and allowing the individual property owners to not do that if they choose to. And therefore, their pavers would go, once the pavers are removed, those pavers would be put right back where they were before, with the potential of an offset.
Okay, so basically, if they reject it, we just put the pavers right back where they came from, and if it doesn't meet up to the curb the way that it should be, then it just is what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
And we would be able to tell them ahead of time, effectively, what that thickness differential is going to be.
Okay, and so there's no compensation option, it's just, take it with a two-foot apron, or you, you get a best-case scenario with the replacing, or putting your pavers back where they were.
The contractor would go back.
Correct.
I just give you a ballpark, I mean, pretty quickly, if you have a twenty-foot wide driveway, five feet deep, that's a hundred square feet, times ten dollars, that's a thousand dollars. So that's what we would be giving people if we opted to do that.
Okay, so you're saying, don't do that, or yes, do that?
I'm saying, I don't, I don't think it's really necessary.
Not necessary, yeah, okay. All right, so the motion on the table is to give the homeowner with pavers the option to accept the two-foot apron, or reject the two-foot apron, and the contractors do a best-case scenario with their existing pavers.
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Then we have another discussion.
All right, motion dies. Councilmember Shaw Elliott, I would like to hear your thoughts on this, because everyone's making motions but you, and I'm not allowed to.
Well, I think we're not allowed to.
I'm not allowed to.
Good to know that. First of all, the proposal that drew us here was to provide for a two-foot concrete apron on all driveways. They were all driveways on these particular streets. So I'll go back to a question, why are these streets different? We've been through a third of our streets where the contractor made the decision as they went along as to whether any pavers needed or something else was needed. So, and I understand that these streets probably required more apron, which was not included in the bid, and that's what brought us here tonight. Is that fair?
I can, I can address that. It's, basically, the contractor knows that they have to change their strategy to make this project work properly. Now, the way that we've done it in the past, I think that we've actually gotten lucky. Would you say that's the case? That we've gotten lucky, and for the most part, it's worked out okay, until we hit a snag with Twenty-third and also Fourteenth. So we realized that, okay, maybe the way that we've been doing is not, is not the most effective and best way of constructing these curves. So now, we've introduced a variable, okay, we're not going to do it the same way for everybody, because, or we want to do it the same way for everybody, because now we can establish an exact cost adjustment for the project, whereas if we say every driveway is treated differently, we don't really have, we don't know what it's going to cost, and we might as well just open our checkbook and say, here's the signature, and you fill it in at the end of the project. So that's the whole purpose of trying to establish a standard. And by giving the homeowner the option of accepting or rejecting, then it's still, we still maintain the same cost, whereas if we, we start doing what we've done in the past, even though we were somehow able to do it, that apparently, we're not able to do that anymore. Mr. Reed, am I correct?
That's correct, yes.
And then going forward, they will have the two-foot standard?
Yes, the remaining streets of this project will have a two-foot standard, and we have the standards to make it look uniform. But with the paver driveways, if it's a very close match, I'd prefer not to put an apron in where we can actually make the pavers work, but that's kind of like a draw.
Okay, so it won't be standard, the paver driveways might go straight up to the curb.
Said differently, Ms. Councilwoman, the aphorism that no plan survives contact with the enemy, or better put by Mike Tyson, everybody has a plan until they get punched in the face, the challenge that you're facing is, you folks are trying to create standardized solutions while also remaining sensitive to the on-the-ground, real-time possibilities of what a contractor may encounter in construction, and then try to be able to pivot in that moment as well. And I think that the delicate balance that each of the four of you are trying to work through in your motions, that's, that's really where the tension seems to be in your respective motions, is how much, when you're left with a call needs to be made in the field, is that, there seems to be a tension between the four of you, between, is the contractor making that call based on the project, or is the property owner making that call based on their own druthers, purposes, or what have you? So that's, that's where it seems to stand.
And I will admit, I'm, I'm struggling with establishing a standard at all if there is no ordinance to back it up, because if you establish a standard, and then you allow the homeowners to go rip out whatever that standard is, then it's not a standard. So from a construction perspective, I agree 100%, that's the easiest way, most cost-effective way, is to cover stamp the design all the way down the street. And really, the only way that I can see this being acceptable, or accepted by the homeowners, is to give them the option to either accept it or reject it, and if they reject it, then the contractor assesses us with additional cost to, to move the pavers around, or we do the offset where we reimburse the homeowner the maximum amount of the, of the apron.
Just a note, my last motion had failed. We said we would vote for five, so I would use the...
Correct.
For the rack, that would cost us a dime.
That's, that's correct, as long as, as long as we, the cost is the same, if everybody's getting the two-foot apron, if they reject it, then the maximum made it and applied for would be the cost of the two-foot apron.
Same as everyone paying.
And then it would be on them, not the contractor.
And that's what the...
And I'm seeing a head nod from the contractor that tells me that he likes that plan also.
And you have people nodding their heads out there, or we, in fact, I don't know why you're in case.
Well, I would entertain some, yes.
Just one more quick question for the contractor, so of the six streets, effectively, that have been completed, were any of those driveways given an apron?
A concrete apron?
Yes.
No.
None of them?
Oh, no, they were, I'm sorry, they were, there were some down here on these streets.
Oh, I saw, okay.
Yeah.
So you didn't, anybody that did those?
So, because the directive was, you know, the contractor was supposed to install the curb with continuous flow, so it more fell on, you know, what we were doing, so we talked with Larry and showed him where it needs to come back, and they both agreed with Kyle, and then we moved forward.
Right. And that's something that would, would come out of the original contract invoicing anyway, because that was identified as such. When that's required, you'll give us a bill for that, and that'll come out of the contingency plan. Okay.
And the idea is to not create downtime, to, that's why we're, you know, we don't want to, because we're going from one point to another, we're not stopping at every driveway, you know what I mean? The intent, you know, is also to, so we can keep moving and get this project done on time, and not stop, and start, and stop, and start, and start.
And that's what was done on 12th and 13th Street, because I talked to a couple of homeowners there the other night, and as you go down 12th and 13th, you can see that there are some more fresh concrete aprons, some are two feet, some are five feet, some are 10 feet, some are none at all, because they weren't required.
Yeah.
So it's really common sense.
We're getting it staked out now with a surveyor, so there'll be grade stakes, every, literally every 10 feet.
Correct.
And then we're also having the surveyor mark everyone's driveway two foot back, so there's no ambiguity, so all the drivers will be marked at a two-foot stake, and every 10-foot down the road will be stakes with grade stakes. So we can come to the driveway and put our pins and pull the string from one end to the other, and we'll be able to see what the difference is in elevation in each driveway, but we can't do that, it's of grade stakes, right?
Okay, all right, so I'm going to go to Councilmember Shaw Elliott, and ask you if you've changed your mind yet.
Well, we want to have consensus, and we want to be able to move this project forward. I do want to state that this is a pretty big departure in, in a philosophical approach, in the sense that this is a public works project, it's for the public, the public as the community makes the decision, and now we're customizing a little bit. But through this discussion, I think we've, we've put some guardrails around that customization. And I think also eliminating B-Bay is also supportive of just the, the community works, that we're all in this together, we're all doing this. So I, to, again, to reach a consensus, I can support the project to move forward with the two-foot standard, with the option to opt out, should the homeowner, at the homeowner's expense, wish to make those modifications. We will then have inconsistency, we won't have a two-foot standard, but that's fine, that's what we're...
So you're saying at the homeowner's expense, and there's no reimbursement?
Correct.
That's your, that's what you're saying?
Correct. And I would also add an observation that I have the pleasure of sitting here with several engineers, and not a great engineer, I'm aware, I'm not an engineer. So in the future, it would be helpful that we had some illustrations, so I have to understand what an apron is, what is it going to look like. So in the future, when we have something like this, it's helpful to have an illustration, something to guide the discussion, so we know exactly what's happening.
Okay, I'm going to ask you one more question. So if everyone here accepted the apron, and let's just say that each apron was $10, all right, so we're spending $10 per apron, and then what's the difference in your mind between giving them a maximum of $10 to not accept the apron, or what, why are you insistent on forcing them to pay on their own? Is it because you want the standard?
No, it's not that, I think it's just a community project, it's a public works project, and so if we have cost savings somewhere, that goes to the public good, and then you do another project, or something else that happens.
There's no cost savings.
Wait, 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 wait.
Well, or if there's a lack of expenditure, a negative expense, and then some not paying that money, and it's just philosophically a very different thing.
Something's not...
Wait, wait, wait.
There's no expenditure, there's no, this is, we're going to put a two-foot apron and $10, okay? It's going to cost us $10. If the homeowner says, hey, look, give me the $10, it's going to cost me $50, let that be their decision, okay? At the end of the day, we're spending $10, okay? So let's get this thing done so these people can go home.
I think the point that Member Shaw Elliott is making, or banked her, is understanding different philosophies, it's sort of like the, well, I saved by buying BOGO, if I wasn't going to buy it at all, that I really saved money to begin with. I think what Member Shaw Elliott is saying is, where we don't, where the city doesn't acquire the two-foot apron, that's $10 it does not have to spend. I agree, I understand your position that, well, it planned on spending it, but now it's not spending it. And I think her concern goes to the constitutional maxim in Florida, that public funds not be spent for private benefit, and where private citizens are opting out of a public project, and now funds are being spent to accommodate their customized design plan, I think that is the concern that Member Shaw Elliott is expressing. Noting that legal, you know, notation, I leave it to you folks to continue to resolve this, I'm not the policymaker. My goal here, in serving as your city attorney, is to try and resolve the differences, and as you talk about standardizations, I just want to make clear, you're, you're having sort of two different parallel discussions about standardizations, Mr. Mayor. The discussion about standardization for purposes of a project is different than the standardization of the aesthetic impact thereafter that the ordinance would regulate. You can have a standardized project and then not have a standardized aesthetic thereafter, if people tear it up, as you said, without consequence, so just, sometimes we talk past each other, I just want to see it as, as the neutral, that's what I'm hearing in your discourse.
I would agree with you on the constitutional part, if we were talking about the valley curb, but now we're going into people's driveways.
In the right way.
In the right way, we're still going into the person's driveway, and we're affecting the aesthetics of their driveway, so we should do something to compensate, because we're going, we're going to tear up their driveway anyway, all right? So let them have the decision and say, hey, let me put it back the way I want it, I have to look at it.
All right, Mr. Roberts?
If the contractor could come up one more time, I just want to clarify something, I think we're getting a little bit off track regarding the payment and the costing. So right now with the contract, so help me understand if I'm not clear on this in my own head, so anytime you currently were to put an apron in, or anytime you have to take out pavers and reinstall it, those costs are already identified in the contracts, it's not part of the original contract amount, it comes out of the contingencies, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So that's, so we're not, we're not losing or paying more or anything like that, that's already in the contract for the contractor to take care of both of those tasks, period.
Okay, all right, so what you're saying is that you have taken, if, if the homeowner rejects the two-foot... if, if the homeowner rejects the two-foot, um, apron, are you still, you're going to do the payers, and then you're going to put them back at the same cost, is that correct?
Correct, so at the cost per the bid items that we bid on. I have a, a little bit of a solution that might help.
Okay, here, let's hear it.
So on six, these six streets we've already done, we haven't had an issue with payers, aprons, blah, blah, blah. The reason we haven't had an issue is we've worked together in the field with Larry, with Kyle, we've brought it up, they've been able to make a decision. I think we all agree that every driveway is its own, you know, its own different job, pretty much. You know, each driveway is its own job. If you just give your city manager the leeway to make onsite decisions on how far back we have to go, whether we have to replace them with payers, whether we have to replace them with concrete, if these decisions could be made on the field with a representative from the city, working with the homeowner at the time that we're on the job, there, there shouldn't be any issues.
Under normal circumstances, I would agree with you. However, the city manager is the one who brought the, um, uh, the driveway adjustment options to us to vote on. And I believe that that was at the recommendation of Mr. Flute. So, um, Mr. Reeder, would you like to comment on that?
Well, every previous project, Twelve and Thirteenth, that's what we did. We made the decision in the field. Again, we were using a different method, we're matching more driveways. But there were situations where we had four different size aprons or just a certain amount of payers. My only concern is that, I would like to, we adjust payers, but if, if it's a paper driveway, and it, you know, maybe it's going to look right as we go 10 feet, 15 feet back, I don't think we need to incur that level of cost through the square footage of resetting that many payers. There's going to be situations where the apron's going to be the better solution. But like I said, it, it's been worked out. You know, you didn't always have the happiest resident, but you got to a decision point, it was accepted.
So based on that, would you like to see that combined?
Based on that, I would like to see, um, we, at maximum, we set a limitation on how many square, or how many feet back from a curb we're going to, we're going to play with. And if we can't do it with that, then we're going to find an alternative solution.
And I'm also, I also heard the city attorney louting clear. I know he's not telling me what to do, telling any of us what to do, but I can read between the lines. We may be opening ourselves up to possible issues if we start handing out cash for private ventures, especially for property in, for other people's property that was constructed within the right way. So I think from, from my standpoint, that's off the table for me. So, Councilmember Shaw Elliott, would you like to make a motion?
We think about this for a moment, but that, um, that basically you're setting a two-foot standard for maximum, right? The apron. Unless...
Two, so the engineers confident that two feet can be, can achieve almost every driveway separately, like a couple, like you said?
Yeah. So that we, we, um, we strive for a, a two-foot standard apron for all driveways, subject to the city manager's discretion. And that will continue with the project. That's it, isn't it?
And I, I think the man, the last little bit of that, harmonizing all the feedback, is the manager asking for, to the extent you're giving him discretion to accommodate the facts on the ground, I don't want to, that it not exceed X feet. So if the city is going to, we encounter a problem on property Y, we're going to, we're going to try and do everything in two foot or less, but on property Y, we need to go seven feet. Well, the city's not going any further than X. I think that's the last.
I think that that is five feet. And I need that with payers primarily. Because payers, payers are the tricky part. You know, depending on what we're doing, is it going to work? Is it going to look right? Is it possible? If it's not, we'll know it.
Member Shaw Elliott, your motion just having a limit on how far that discretion will go by, by measure of the, I think, the guidance.
So the, uh, establish a two-foot standard subject to the city manager's discretion not to exceed five feet.
So.
Is that, is that what you said? Do I have a second on that one?
All right. I'm just trying to listen to the input from the contractor and the city manager.
Let me draw. Okay, so the mayor, the motion fails.
I would like to make it as simple as possible. I would like to remove the other motion that I made completely. Can I do that? I just want that to be...
We may have to vote to, uh, to...
Another one that was approved.
Oh, the previous one.
Here's what I'd like to propose. I'd like to make a motion as recommended by the contractor and responded by the city manager that he's comfortable with this, that we just allow the city manager to make any field decisions that are necessary within the scope of this project. And the only, the only way that he may have to come back would be if the distance from the edge of the gutter to where the work needed to be completed is more than 10 feet. Anything 10 feet or less? Kyle's going to take care of it, work with the contractor. This thing's going to get done. I'm confident of it. We don't need to put too many constraints around it and rules. Just let Kyle do it. He's got good, he's smart, he knows how to do it. He's already got Aaron out there watching the, working with the contractor every day. And if they really need to speak with somebody smart, they can just call me. They got my cell phone. Just a joke. So Kyle will take care of it, and I, and I don't think there's an issue. If, if Kyle asks for something, anything over 10 feet would make him feel kind of out of bounds on that, that's fine. So we'll put that caveat in there.
Can I simplify your motion?
Yes, absolutely.
So the motion, I, I think the motion is actually to approve the total of $133,140 and allow the city manager to manage this project as he sees fit.
Yes, sir.
Is anyone here?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I, one more question. So, city manager will have full discretion on each and every driveway?
I believe that's what I'm hearing. I like it, Kyle, but I don't know if I could vote on something like that. First of all, your, our ordinance says, I think you have $10,000 you can spend without city council rules, so you might violate that if there's a problem on somebody's driveway, I don't know.
But his job is to manage the project.
His job is to... I believe if he was approved for this amount and he needed to come back for more money to make the project work, he would have to approve the house. Now, he, he does have a limitation that he, he can spend some. But if it turned out to be just astronomical costs to accommodate our residents, then he would have to come back to us and explain why and how much he needed. I'm just saying, if this guy needs $2,000, this guy needs $4,000, this guy needs $1,000. Again, I disagree with our attorney on the constitutionality problem. We're not giving money away. We're just saying, here, what's going to cost us this? What's going to cost you that? But, hey, you have a second on this? Any other comments?
No, sir.
Any comments?
No. I think this is consistent with, uh, the way public works should work and we have to make it our manager.
And at the end of the day, um, I, uh, I owe you one for placing this agenda item on tonight's special meeting. Because it's, no matter what, you're never going to get everyone to agree. And ultimately, it is your job to manage the city, and it's our job to approve or, or disapprove what you recommend. So I'm going to, uh, I'm going to vote yes on this and say that we move forward. I'm going to ask that you do everything that you can to stay within this budget, because this is a large amount of money you're asking for. And I would also ask that you work very closely with everyone here that has concerns about their paper driveway. So let, since this is a sensitive topic, let's go ahead and take it to a voice vote. Renee?
Councilmember Bankard?
No.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott?
Yes.
And Mayor Gaddis?
Yes. So it passes three to one. Seeing as we have no other items on the agenda.
Do we need to rescind the earlier?
No.
The previous motions have all done.
Seeing as if we have no other items on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. I got to say it this time. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, call in favor? Aye.
To question something that's going on in their home area. I support that 100%. The one thing that I would like to ask the citizens to actually, I was going to say minimize, not to speak directly to any of the contractors or engineers that are working on our project. If you have a question, and many of you people out there are probably smarter than me, you have a background, you have a question that something's happening that you think may be an issue, please call the city manager so that he can work with the contractor and/or the engineer. Because what happens is, what could happen and will happen if our city, um, people's contractors start feeling like the last city you want to bid a job on is Baylor Beach because we have too many citizens that are giving a hard time to the contractors and the workers that they're, just human nature now. So the next time we go out to a bid, the only people that at first, it's not going to be as many contractors bidding, and the ones that will bid will bid very high because their take on it will be, I really don't want to do this job, but if they're willing to pay me X, I go to it. So we really need to help the city out by making sure that we do everything we can to make the contractors and the engineers, anybody that does work for us, to want to do work for us. That, that's the direction we want to go. So just, if you have concerns, 100%, you should be able to voice your concerns. But please try to do those concerns and questions to the city manager so he can handle it or she can handle it appropriately. And it'll really help everybody in the long run. So I just want to point that out.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. I will consider that an aye, and this, this meeting is adjourned.